All right, Boston Governance being two o'clock, special meeting called to order. All three offices are represented. Notice the meeting was properly posted March twenty fifth. Discussion of possible action regarding approval minutes of March fifteenth. Motion second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so carry over a little bit from the Board of County Commissioners, discussion of possible action regarding review of fiscal budgets with consultants, options for ARP's and Policy and Governance Committee review budgets and programs and services to be considered for ARPA monies. And seeing a lot of department heads who have discussed having numbers with them, is that something we want just turned in and review at this point, or do we want to?
What are? So we have these consultants that we've paid a lot of money to. I think the best thing to do is to return all those budgets to them and ask them the simple question, what qualifies? Why would I want to? You won't, there's no microphone. Is it, come on down to the front of the table. You don't have to be Baptist sitting at the back.
All right, Miles's question, I guess the question of turning numbers to the consultants, how many department heads have taken their numbers and sent to the consultants?
But the big question there is what the consultants believe are we able to use ARPA funds for?
Well, I know.
What accounting mechanisms, I get that, I get that.
I'm trying to get a feel for if they've only got numbers from three department heads, how can they give us?
They can feel, well, they can, I'm not asking for a ballpark, I think they ought to look at everybody's budget, figure out what inside of each budget can be money could be used for.
I don't know if this is exactly what you're saying, but I'm sitting over here befuzzled as what is the purpose of this, right? As Miles said, we're paying these people. And in the RFP, one of the things that it says is that they will help us develop programs and projects that are within our statutory authority. So it would seem to me that the first step, and I have an item later, is to identify what is within our ability to do, R being the county. And C, the other question, and there's nobody here from the center to ask is, and I know this is different than CARES. But to use CARES funds for ongoing expenditures, they had to been not previously budgeted for. And here, although we've not entered into the new budget year, we receive a budget which normally covers all of these expenses. And I'd like, I'd like them to answer that question as well, so. I'm not, not certain what we're doing. These, these folks aren't the experts, no offense. But as it comes to ARPA, they're not the experts in being able to tell you what is and isn't a permissible expense. And I, I think maybe Miles, that's what you were saying?
Well, that's what I'm saying. The accounting mechanism to be able to use the ARPA funds as we deem fit is what we're looking to do. What what within the, the rules, the facts, the guidelines, whatever they're calling them today? What in that are we able to use ARPA funds for? So we can focus on other projects that have long been outstanding for the county.
We can use it for small business assistance. Right? We can use it to?
Within their guidelines.
Right. Generally speaking, within, we could do assistance to help with homelessness, mental health, communities, centers.
See another, that's why I want to get some of this stuff to the consultants. I'm sure you're on some of the same email list, I'm. The Large Urban County Caucus from the NACO, they had a Mr. Gonzalez that came on and did a presentation about how much federal funds, and if you recall, going through this entire process, I asked routinely, are these funds able to be matched? Will you help us apply for other funds? So in that instance, the homeless stuff, there's money out there that we can go after, and that's some of the things that I wanted to look at as we develop these programs and stuff like that. I want to be able to say to the consultants, what other pots are out there that we can use? Instead of using this ARPA fund to where we could use ARPA funds on something further down the road. Because yes, it's permissible, but if I'm able to get other funds to do the exact same thing and stretch our ARPA dollars further, I think we ought to do everything we can to stretch it as far as possible.
Within the time that you have to expend.
Within the, yeah. Yeah, yes. But that's also another thing that allowing us in going through this accounting mechanism, as they suggest, and offsetting some of the things and making them general fund dollars. That timeline goes away.
Again, though, it seems to me that the consultant that we hired should evaluate what statutory authority we have relative to ARPA and say, you could do this, and it might be a completely new program. You could do this, and you may be able to access additional funds in another pot as well. That, that's, to your point, that's, that's something that we ask them to do.
I mean, they're funding things on the federal side almost on a daily basis right now with the infrastructure bill being funded.
Infrastructure to help us down the street. I just, I'm not sure.
Be nice to give them that. At any rate, I, to Michael's point, I think what needs to happen is everybody's budgets needs to get to the consultants, the consultants need to do. I mean, honestly, to me, it sounds like there's, both of you have points, and both of those things need to come together. Consultant needs to do what the consultants do. Our people need to do what our people do and get their, the information that they need to be able to do what they're, we're asking them to do. So we need to submit our budgets, our projected budgets, even the budget in arrears. If we're able to give them those budgets and set a deadline, I know that we said Friday last week, and they got some confusion with that, whatever it was. Let's get that done, and let's hear from the consultants. Because me sitting here pretending to be the professional that's getting paid for this is not what I intended for any of this to be. That's why we hired the consultants to sit there with our statutes, with our rules, facts, and guidelines, and put it all together, and we can meet with them individually, we can meet with them as a board, we can meet them.
We can meet them individually, but, but no one individual can direct them to do anything, and, and that's.
No, but you can ask them the.
Sure, I could ask them to tell me if the sky's blue, purple, red, or green.
Right. So I mean, like if you had if you had a project that you would like to do with ARPA, what's wrong with asking them, can you do this project? What would it be? What does it look like in other states? And then?
I, I think me asking that individually is different than me asking on behalf of or directing others that aren't direct in District One, right? There's a difference. But the board spoke, the board spoke on Monday on how to do this now that. So the, the question is, it's the chicken and the egg, right? Is the consultant going to analyze and tell us what we can or we can't do? Are we just going to give them the numbers and?
I think it's both. We need to give them.
But beyond.
We need to ask them, we need to give them.
Beyond this.
I don't care which one.
This is a drop in the bucket at the total potential expenditure of the ARPA funds, so.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And that's, the longer we sit there and beat up on this little simple subject, I mean, it's, there's, everybody's got their budget for the next FY. Yes, you are correct. And those are what we should be submitting to Accenture. What about standing up?
Take facilities.
No, you don't.
Take facilities. Look at twenty eight oh one and buy line item. Why not let the experts determine under what category, how much advertising is standard?
Thank you for saying the exact same thing that I've just said for the fourth time. Well, evidently.
So here's, here's what we can. Facility management for each P and D A budget. This not go to our experts for them to determine what's applicable?
Would anybody like to translate?
I, my understanding from apartment heads with the conference call with the consultants, that was the next step, was you were going to send your numbers to them.
What numbers should be sent to them rather than send our expenditures and let them determine what those are. Just in the arrears departments for fiscal.
Quite frankly, I think you ought to send them your entire. My opinion is to send your entire budget, last year's current, this current FY. That entire budget needs to go to them. They're the ones that, and I'm for you, Keith, I'll speak slower and plainer. And louder. I, I envision you giving them everything that you're saying and asking them, what in this can we reimburse ourselves from our budget, from your expenditures? Is it, is it advertising? Is it whatever it is? That's their decision, or not their decision, it's our decision, it's them, it's their job to tell us as the experts what we can and can't do. Am I? I get that. I, I don't, I, I understand that.
Well, just from that, I would say send them what you have. And that's your expenditures and all those columns. And then what you anticipate for next year's budget, items that they could look at through the lens of the ARPA monies.
So I'm, I'm trying to read the room. This is my personal opinion. It appears the concern is you all are worried that you're somehow going to be held accountable in the event that some of these funds are later spent. Is that, is that a fair assumption? Okay. To alleviate that, I think if you're instructed by the board to provide information, you aren't the ones that are seeking reimbursement, or you aren't the ones that are transferring the funds. Right? That's on the board. If the money is later held to be an inadmissible expense. So it's on the board. I also don't believe that you should be put in a position of trying to look at an estimate and needs and determine which and what is and what isn't COVID related, right? I'll use janitorial as an example. I mean, you, you have toilet paper, you have cleaning supplies, you have wax, you have, so, right? But as I recall, and it's been a while since I've been on EBT, that, that is not line item out under that janitorial category, if I remember correctly, is it? Or it may be in some and it may not be in others.
In our budget worksheet, and we'll look at line items of expenditures in that container.
Okay, then giving that to the consultant, then they're going to have to drill down and have to do, get back with y'all and have, they'll have additional questions. Right? Okay, of the fifty four thousand dollars in cleaning supplies, what is this? What is that? I, I don't think you should be overly concerned that by providing the numbers, you're somehow going to be held accountable. I'm not a lawyer, I'm not the DA's office, but you are doing something that you're instructed to do by if not the board, a majority of you.
Good start. Right then, with a line item and having determined what is and what isn't, and then we can reference that moving forward.
I think that's, Keith, I think, I think as Miles and I may be arguing a little bit over stuff, but I think we're on the same page there. In terms of the consultant needs to do what the consultant's been hired to do. Yes, provide them the information. They need to analyze it relative to our statutory authorities accounting and determine whether or not it's a permissible expense. Then.
I missed the argument part. Yeah, that, that's it. And that's what we're paying them for.
Yeah, I mean, I think some of the confusion, at least on my part, came from things that occurred previously. But I, I think providing them with the information, which A is all a matter of public record anyway, is, is fine. You're not being asked to make the determination as to whether or not it's COVID related. That's, that's the board.
Nor would you, nor could you legally, the board's the only one that can make that decision.
Yeah, I think, I think in that regard, you can rest mortons. And what happens after these numbers are provided and determinations are made or not made is not. Okay, so they give them numbers. What happens next?
I missed something else. I think they give them the numbers, but we need to ask Accenture to analyze each one of those budgets, work with our department heads to figure out.
Exactly. I, I, I've seen some traffic from the center and they're feeling like they don't know what to do. And so that's what I'm hoping
Okay.
we're able to accomplish today with some other items.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I mean, that, that seems pretty basic to me. I mean, I think that's, is everybody all on the same page on that? I mean, now's the time to ask the questions or say that you're not, if you're not.
Should we make sure I boil it down as simple as possible? We're handing them our budgets, we're saying here's our FY twenty one budget, here's our FY twenty two budget. Then they called us, that's it. We worked with them, they will identify and say, hey, what is this for? This is what this expense for? That's it.
They call you and they say, this category within your budget is general, it says fifty thousand dollars for whatever. Can you break it down further inside of that category and help us understand what it is to see if there's actually reimbursable costs inside that cost figure? Yes, absolutely. Okay. Yes. Yes, when they end, when they call, pick up the phone. Yes.
And then they're going to report back to us, hopefully, all of their findings so that we can then.
That's where I understand our confusion. Conference call, it was made to seem like we were supposed to pick out. Because they gave us the five categories for us. And it was very confusing, but that's not the case.
I didn't know. Let's, let's focus on the here and now and what's past before we start looking at tomorrow. Just, just simple. I appreciate you forecasting out and thinking about it.
Was communicated to them previously and reading this in additional confusion. So I think we just do what you just said. The first part of this, we can hit the backside later.
Do you agree with that one? No, I think we've, it's already been.
Proceed as discussed.
It's a.
I mean, if you want to motion to direct the, that, that's.
Yeah, it's the call, you guys. entertain a motion for the directors to proceed as discussed in getting their budgets and their spent expenditures to the consultants. Motion second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I'm going to, because some of these items refer to item six, I'm going to jump down to item six, discussion of possible action regarding ARPA Treasury request that Oakland County resubmit an updated recovery plan to the Treasury via reporting portal no later than April eighth. So that's why I have items three through five. So I don't know that outside of a discussion point for six.
But I'd like to talk about all of those in the business, so.
Well, right. But I was just letting you know that's six, probably should have been three, but we're all good. So now back to item three. No action needed for item six. Item three, discussion of possible action, American Rescue Plan Act. Arpa allowances for the county to use one time ten million dollar amount or multi-year formula. At the time was sixteen point eight. I've got a different number, which I probably didn't print off, but I think for the, I know this was going to be determined for the April thirtieth reports. But I think through the clerk's office, there's been enough numbers figured. I think the number now, the new number is fifteen point four. Does that number sound familiar, Danny? Again. But my concern with the multi-year formula is based on end of this year's actual revenues, that formula would be replugged in where we possibly would lose our second and third year based on our revenues from the rest of this year. So my, my recommendation on the allowance, knowing that the ten million is a one-time allowance for general government, that that's what we recommend to the BLCC for the April fourth meeting.
I'm, I'm right there with you, but I, I am curious when we initially calculated lost revenue, it was zero. And then there was a, there was a percentage change in the factor. I'm just kind of curious.
About how the, how it changed?
Yeah, and then in their report that they sent us, Michael, they, and it, it looks like we're probably going to do the ten million, but it don't matter. But in the report they sent us, they said six point six million for these first two years, but then when you look at the document, it's only six point three. So and now, now it's, what'd you say, fifteen four?
It's all over the place.
Are these up?
No, are they finally up and running?
Yep.
Well, it's all, it, it is, it's bounced around quite a bit. I think to get the burden of hands worth doing the bush, just we could be just out and discuss the formulas all day long, or we can just go ahead and agree that, it sounds like we're already agreement. And let's recommend to the Board of County Commissioners that they take the ten million and.
Yeah, to feel comfortable, I was just trying to get an understanding.
I get that. That's.
Why?
Danny's worked with them pretty extensively, and that's another reason to have the experts and people like Danny around. But I, I trust Danny, I've asked him two, maybe three times on this, specifically which way to go? And what his thoughts were on the deal? Similarly, we think the same on this one, that it's just easier to take the ten because we don't have the risk of taking a loss.
And the reporting is a heck of a lot.
And the reporting's involved.
True.
So motion recommended to the Board of County Commissioners that they take the one time allowable amount of ten million dollars from ARPA.
I have a motion as second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That'll be forwarded to BLCC for the April fourth meeting.
I think they can decide at the time where put in general fund and make a cost.
Item four, kind of discussion of possible action for the American Rescue Plan, ARPA funds cost center light item for general government up to forty five million. And this is based over the next three years of items that could possibly be utilized within general government.
This it seems a little premature to me, given that the consultants have done no analysis yet as to what, nor has the board spoken as to what programs they might be interested in. What is the harm in, in not taking this action or making this recommendation today?
If we go either way, I'm not going to sit there and say there's harm or no harm. I'm just concerned with their emails stating that we need to resubmit our updated recovery plan, which happens to be a date before the actual April thirtieth due date for that, but they're not comfortable with what we have to date. So I didn't know if getting some cost centers there with some items to work with in our updated recovery plan, if that would ease federal governments, and I, I totally believe the design of their April eighth deadline is so to determine whether or not they're going to send us the remainder of the hundred and fifty four million that is yet to be sent. And, yeah, I mean, we could.
Well, not, not knowing the nature of why it is they, they say we need to amend our report. Do you mind elaborating a little bit? So what what I heard was we're going to be on April the twelfth, which will give them two weeks from today. And that lines out with a bi-weekly report, that lines out with the scope.
And that lines out with a bi-weekly report, that lines out with the scope, that lines out with some numbers from the directors. And. We can go from that date.
All right. Are there, are there other things that you would, you all would like for Accenture to report on?
I don't think there's anything from. Think there's anything by side. As it sits right now, I think. I think there certainly will be, but. Want to. Want to see what, uh, it's going to happen. With some of the things that are being asked of them right now.
And to that, I think in the conversations, they, they reference other dollars, other funds. They were waiting for some, uh, infrastructure numbers and. Final had come out on that.
They came out, so.
Oh, it came out?
Yeah, that's out. That, that was one of the things that. I was looking at earlier until my phone died. It, so there's, there's. There's pots of money that have now been built. That we're going to be able to, as a county, directly apply to the feds for these pots of money. Some of them are. Infrastructure, some dollars, some of them are, almost, some of them are, uh, broadband. I mean, i- i- there's a lot of the same things that we're able to use the ARPA funds for. That we've, that they've set up additional, uh, funding opportunities within. Other agencies that we're going to be able to apply to. Now. One of the things that is different about the ARPA funds. That is traditionally different when it comes to federal funds. Is that we're going to be able to combine. Two sets of federal funds, or ARPA funds and then a grant fund will actually be able to. Combine those things. Typically, you can't.
In most institutes.
Yeah, typically I can't go over to Department of Labor and Department of Justice and take two grants to make one, one project. They, they typically don't, well. I shouldn't say typically. They, in my knowledge, don't allow that. Period.
The one thing that comes here.
Yeah.
Yeah, the Miles's point. We're just talking about a little blip of our hundred and fifty million, four million in micro funds, but the, the, the act itself contains several plots of money, as Miles referenced, that are available for counties or states. Make application for. And, and they need to identify those as well, is what I'm hearing you say.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, that was. In anticipation of that. Cause I mean, we were going through the selection processes, they were debating the bill. In anticipation of that, that's. Why I continuously asked if they were going to be able to identify those other funding options for us, which ones we can combine, because we can't combine them all. But as long as we can, let's roll. So. But I want the, uh. Want to get past the first date, if you will.
And the first date is the budgetary analysis or something else?
Everything that we've just asked them to do.
Okay.
Yeah. Something.
All right. Anything else on item nine? Do you want that one to carry over?
Yes.
Like I got a motion and a second.
Second.
Motion second on item nine, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
With that, citizen participation. Board comments, District One?
Yeah, thanks to all of you. Sorry that there was some confusion. Hopefully now that we're. Got an item. Our consultant knows what we're wanting, uh, you'll feel a little more comfort. You have questions in the future, just come here to this meeting.
District three?
They'll take it.
Pay a motion to adjourn.
Enjoy just sitting here.
Do you know, Miles, that if we leave, he can adjourn by himself?
Chair sees the floor. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Saying no objection.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you.
I.